...to the tip off.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker needs no introduction. She stepped into her role of governor and has been working nonstop for the betterment of all Arizonans. She seems to have endless energy and is everywhere, so we are thrilled that she's on our men's Final Four team. Please welcome Arizona Governor Katie Hobbs.
Thank you, Jay. Good morning, everyone. It's great to be with you again as we welcome another great event to the state of Arizona. And I am delighted to welcome the NCAA for the men's Final Four in 2024. As we just witnessed with the 2023 tournament, there is never a shortage of excitement and great entertainment befitting the name of March Madness. And while this part of the tournament occurs in April, there is still plenty of excitement and drama to be had with the Final Four National Championship Games. Arizona is just coming off of hosting Super Bowl LVII, which by all accounts was an enormous success. In fact, we have a long history of hosting major sporting events, and it's because we have so much to offer. Coming here, you get a multi-city, multi-day regional experience with opportunities to experience the many things that our state has to offer. Only in Arizona can you go skiing in the morning and take a desert hike in the afternoon. The schedule of the tournament will give visitors a few extra days to check out the state with time to make any number of excellent day trips around our great state. We hope that folks will come and enjoy the many resorts, spas, golf courses, and restaurants that the Valley has to offer as well. The economic impact to the state and region cannot be understated. The visitors who stay in our hotels, eat in area restaurants, and visit attractions around the state bring in welcome revenues. While there are always expenses associated with these events, the over 160,000 people who work in Arizona's tourism and hospitality industry know the value of these major events. In coming to Arizona, the NCAA should know that you're getting the very best in hospitality as well as engagement from all levels of government and the private sector. And as they always do, I am sure that Arizonans will turn out to volunteer and show their support for this event. We have a little bit less than a year to prepare, which is more than enough time for Jay and her team, who are pros at this, and my administration also stands ready to help in any way that we can. We want the NCAA to feel welcome and supported and to make this the greatest Final Four weekend ever. Arizona knows how to prepare for these events, and we will be ready to welcome the visitors from around the country who are coming to cheer on the Final Four teams. Thank you so much for choosing Arizona to host again this year.
Governor, thank you so much. Well, it's always a pleasure to share the stage with Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego. She's brought relentless commitment to improving the city of Phoenix in new and innovative ways, and I have the feeling that her son is going to become the biggest basketball fan if he isn't already. So please welcome Mayor Gallego.
Thank you, Jay. The countdown to the Final Four starts today. We are so excited to unveil the countdown clock. Every time residents come through Sky Harbor, they will see the number of days until we welcome back the men's Final Four. This is a really exciting opportunity, and it builds momentum for the incredible economic slam dunk that comes with the Final Four. When we hosted the men's Final Four in 2017, ASU estimated a $324 million economic impact. We have only gotten smarter, and we're going to make sure that the Final Four is a win for everyone in Arizona. For so many of our residents, they first came to our community as tourists, and so we'll be welcoming new basketball fans. We will be cementing our reputation as championship valley. Central Arizona is very good at hosting mega events. It was fabulous to work with Jay Perry and Governor Hobbs to welcome the Super Bowl, and we are only going to build from that momentum with this great Final Four. Final Fours are very special because Phoenix is a basketball city. From the Phoenix Suns to our amazing NCAA teams, the Mercury and more, we love basketball and we do it well. You're going to see basketball take over the city streets. One of my personal favorite events of the 2017 Final Four was the youth dribble, where 3,000 students dribbled basketballs in one fun event. My six-year-old, I think, will be old enough now to participate in the dribble, so I'm hoping we could take that to the next level. The three-day March Madness Music Festival in 2017 drew 135,000 music lovers to Phoenix's Hans Park, with Saturday and Sunday being sold out, reaching capacity. The Final Four Fan Fest drew over 50,000 to the Phoenix Convention Center. We have the team returning. We have a great team who's done now multiple championship events that will be returning and making sure we deliver the great fan experience with free and low-cost events in addition to the big games themselves. We'll be able to highlight our skyline, which has grown tremendously since we last hosted in 2017. We'll welcome people to amazing restaurants, including America's Best Pizza at Pizzeria Bianco. They'll have a new, better experience at Sky Harbor with the convenience of Skytrain, and they can whisk away from the Skytrain in Waymo's autonomous rideshare from our airport, again celebrating that this airport was the first airport in the world to have autonomous vehicle service. We have a lot to show off as the nation looks at Phoenix, and we're excited for basketball fans everywhere to see all that we have to offer and to continue to celebrate championship valley. We will go straight from the Final Four in 2024 to celebrate the women's Final Four in 2026. The future is here in Phoenix, and we are ready for March Madness.
All right, Mayor, I like the sound of championship valley, so thank you for that. Engaging with students and universities is at the core of the mission of the host committee. And as the host institution, Arizona State University will play an important role in all the preparations and execution of this event. Please welcome Ray Anderson, ASU Vice President for University Athletics.
Thank you, Jay, and good morning, everyone. Arizona State is thrilled and grateful for the opportunity to serve as a host institution, and we will take a very active leadership role in ensuring the men's Final Four meets the high expectations of Ms. Scott and the NCAA. You might say that hosting is in our DNA, and ASU has hosted numerous NCAA championships over the years, and if you've ever tended one of them, you'll know that we always put the student-athlete experience first. So my expectation is that our staff and student-athletes will be engaged every step of the way. And then the 2017 men's Final Four was a transformative moment for ASU, and we will take key learnings and findings from that event to make the 2024 men's Final Four even bigger and better. And so we will strive to involve every student, staff, and faculty member on our Tempe campus as well as our downtown Phoenix campus, which is home to 11,700 full-time students. And this downtown campus is short walk from the men's Final Four downtown Phoenix footprint. And we will explore ways to involve our students with the ancillary events as well as activities at the stadium. So supporting student-athletes is at the heart of everything we do and what the NCAA does. So during the men's Final Four, we know that the student-athletes will focus on the court. They've worked hard to get there, but we will also ensure that their time away from the stadium is enriching, and when they leave, they will take home lifelong memories of their experience here in Phoenix, Tempe, Mesa, and our beautiful surrounding areas. So thank you all for coming. Final Four, it's on its way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray, so much. I'm excited about our starting lineup, aren't you all? We've got some A players right now. They're going to, they might be fighting over who's going to be the point guard, but we'll get to that. So we've come to the moment we were all here for. We're going to have a little setup by our ASU basketball band. It's official. Phoenix is on the clock. 352 days and seven hours until tip off. Thank you for attending today and for your support of the 2024 men's Final Four. Over the next year, thank you all. Have a fantastic day.
Welcome to On the Issues. I'm Councilman Jim Waring. Joining me on today's show is Phoenix Fire Chief Mike Duran. Chief Duran, welcome to the show.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Well, I'm really honored to have you here. You've been chief for, you know, almost better part of a year, almost, starting in February. You know, we haven't had a chance to do a show with you, and we're really honored to have you here. Obviously, we've talked to your predecessors and lots going on with the fire department, a lot of changes in technology, a lot of changes in the city of Phoenix, so I want to touch on all those things. But first, I thought viewers would like to get to know you a little better. You have a fascinating family history with Phoenix Fire. Your dad was a firefighter. You've got two brothers on the fire department right now, so you want to talk a little bit about that and how it influenced you?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Councilman Waring, for having me on the show today. I appreciate that and get a chance to, you know, sit in front of the viewers here and talk a little bit about myself. And yeah, so I've been with the fire department now for 20, over 28 years. I guess took over here as the fire chief in February of this year. My dad was, is retired executive assistant chief. He retired in 2008 from the fire department after 36 years of service. I have two brothers that are on the fire department right now. Both are about, about 22 to 23 years of service in the fire department with them. So, so yeah, it's definitely something that's a tradition in our family, you know, and we want to continue that on hopefully the next generation of firefighters in our family. As a matter of fact, you know, I have several nephews and nieces that are looking to do the same, so.
Well, that's fantastic. I mean, it's really an inspiring story, too, a record of public service, not just one generation of a family, but two and then potentially more and multiple family members. We've got police officers like that as well. I know there are other firefighters in the same situation, but I just think it's fantastic, a chief, having that kind of institutional history. So working backwards, your dad started in the '70s.
Correct. He started in 1973, and actually, I'll even go back a little bit further there because both my grandfathers worked for the city of Phoenix. One works in the park, worked in the Parks Department, and one worked in what they called sanitation back then in Public Works. So yeah, so it's actually, I'd be the third generation in the city of Phoenix here.
Wow, that's, well, that's fantastic. So, so you came on in the early '90s. Dad's starting in the early '70s. I mean, there must have been, it must be like a completely different job at this point. I know the responsibilities, but with the technology, the GPS, you want to talk a little bit about some of the changes that you've seen?
Certainly. Yes, and you know, the Phoenix Fire Department's always been innovative, and with the leadership at the time, when I came on was Fire Chief Alan Brunessini. Our labor president was Pat Cantelmi. And really, you know, the Phoenix Fire Department was known for being innovative, looking at, you know, operational, fire tactics and strategy, response times. Customer service was, was what we talked about all the time and how we could provide better service to the community and really expanding on our scope of, you know, fire, EMS, transportation for the community, operating in special operations, which was technical rescue operations that we see more and more of, hazardous materials response. We started in the mid-'90s, working on a program called the Community Response. Well, now is today the Community Response Program, going out and assisting folks that may need assistance of grief support or after a fire, they having, they needed some supportive help with getting connected to social services. As far as the technology, what I've seen and what I think has been most significant for us is the ability to address the health and wellness of our members. When I came on, we had a health center that was already pretty established, but that is continuing to grow, and so we are seeing more and more direct efforts at the wellness and health of our members, from the equipment that we use today, the type of turnouts, our SCBAs, even how we build our fire stations, even some of our most recent fire stations is where you have different layers as you walk in to not bring those contaminants into a fire station. Same thing with our fire trucks. You wouldn't think about that, but the contaminants that are inside the fire trucks from us carrying our equipment in there, we try to reduce that and have the ability to clean those surfaces very well, keep our turnouts outside of the, outside of the truck after a fire, not bringing those in. So we've really evolved in the fire, not just in the Phoenix Fire Department, but the fire service across the country, and we are definitely looking at all those best practices here. So just in my 28 years, we've definitely seen a lot, and we advanced in emergency medical services with our heart monitors have changed over time and being able to have better technology to provide that type of care to the patients. We've expanded our transportation services with our ambulances over the years, so, and we know that's continuing to grow. Obviously, we have a, our call volume is continuing to grow, and just, you know, in the last 10 to 12 years, what I've seen in being in the manager position is the growth of the city and how that's having definite impacts on us and the fire service here to meet that demand. But, you know, you have a city that's, what we see, we look at it from 2014 to now, 300,000 residents have come to the city of Phoenix, which I think is tremendous for us to grow and bring the industry here, and we want to make sure that we're meeting the services of the community.
Yeah, we've been the fastest-growing city and the fastest-growing county for a while. Obviously, when you have that kind of growth, and we're spread out, you know, we're not a concentrated city. We're a big geographic entity, and so you can have enough firefighters, but if you don't have a place to stage them, that's an issue. That became an issue in my district a few years ago, and we built, had Station 55 built. I think the turnaround on that might have been, I talked to your predecessor about it, and I think it took about a year and a half, but I think you guys were staging out of an old hotel, if memory serves, within a few weeks of issues being brought to my attention. And so I really appreciated that. The new fire station, I know exactly what you're talking about in terms of the layers and how it's set up, and that's a great thing because I think everybody, everybody watching at home is going to understand firefighting is a dangerous business, but there were a lot of unseen dangers that maybe weren't thought about back in the '70s or '80s that kind of came to the fore, and we're trying to help you, you know, with your guidance, we've tried to provide the resources to address those.
Certainly. We truly appreciate the support of the mayor, council, the city of Phoenix, our residents and understanding and knowing and taking interest in the health and wellness of our members, making sure that we have the right equipment. And I think for us as a fire service, as a fire department, you know, with the funding that we have, we really do leverage that very well and do very well with being able to acquire the equipment. What I like to see for us is a lot of the planning for the future and trying to anticipate those needs for us and looking at best practice and doing the research out there. And so for me, in my role, my position, I truly promote that with all of our sections and looking at that and addressing that.
Well, I've appreciated the briefings that we've had, that you've shared with me, both public and in my office and private. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're not trying to look at just like, what do we need right this second, but what could be helpful for residents and firefighters for the next 20 years? And that goes also to expanding the staffing. You know, I think you used to have more applicants than you do now, but we're still not in a deficit situation like we are with police. That's a different discussion. So I think fire is one of the few areas in the city where we're getting enough applicants to fill the spots. It's just getting them, you know, it's not for everybody. So you can apply, but if you're afraid of heights or don't like fire, you know, maybe it's not the game for you. So you want to talk a little bit about how many people apply, what kind of process people walking, watching at home might, might be interested in trying to become a Phoenix firefighter? What do you have to go through? How long does it take to go from sending in that first application to actually getting on a truck and go into a fire?
Certainly. Thank you for that question, and that is one of our initiatives right now is to really get out to the community and reach out, not just here locally, but across the country and do recruitment for the Phoenix Fire Department and bringing in the next generation of firefighters. So that's been a focus for us. Our human resources section has a recruitment officer that puts together plans on how we go out and promote and reach out to the community and bring in those recruits and educate them on the process. One of the things that I think is unique about our system is that we have what we call the affinity groups, and there are different makeups within our organization with Hispanic firefighters, Black firefighters, we have Irish-American firefighters and Valley Women's Groups. So several of these groups all work together in helping us with our recruitment efforts out in the community, not just, again, here locally, but, but across the state and nationwide. For someone that's interested, that would like to look into a career with the Phoenix Fire Department, can certainly go to our website, that's on the city of Phoenix website, backslash fire, and look at what the requirements are for us. Right now, we had our last testing process just before the fall, end of the summer here. The numbers were a little bit less than what we normally are used to. So what we used to see is maybe 3,000 to 4,000 applicants. We're seeing about 1,100 applicants and about 900-plus people taking the actual written test. So we know that we definitely have to have probably more tests here in the future and look at how we continue to plan ahead so that we can make sure we're meeting that demand.
Yep, and police and other industries, big employers around the country are having trouble, you know, getting people to apply and getting the right folks to apply. You know, that's definitely a challenge. Obviously, we don't let just anybody become a Phoenix firefighter. It's a pretty rigorous, both physical and mental job, and the tests are commensurate with that. So if you get 900 people taking the test, how many would you expect to eventually work for Phoenix Fire?
The way we look at that is based on our attrition rate, obviously, and numbers. If we're adding new positions into the system there.
You have to have spots open.
We'll have to have the spots correct. So we look at all those numbers there. Normally, I would say within this process here, we're probably looking at about, you know, anywhere between 100 to 150 positions with this next process, within this next process here. So, but yes, you are right. There's definitely demands on this job here. It's not for everybody. You are, what we look at is we call ourselves an all-hazard system, right? So a firefighter shows up, you know, they're problem solvers. There are folks that are going to show up with, with the training and the resources to help that person at whatever crisis that that might be at that moment in time. A lot of our firefighters come with much experience, just, you know, from somewhere else that they bring into our organization. Obviously, firefighting is, is what we do a lot of the time. Most of our calls evolve around medical services, right? 85% of what we do today in the fire service, fire EMS service, is based around EMS. And then you have your special operations, which is your hazmat, technical rescue, and other areas where for folks can gain training and knowledge and be, become more, expand their roles here in the fire service. So also, some of our folks will work on an ambulance for a period of time. As you first come onto the Phoenix Fire Department, we have our own transportation system. We have about 36 ambulances in our system, and we transport very regularly. And so part of the firefighter recruit upon completion of their probation will be sitting on an ambulance and responding on and transporting people to the hospital. There's still firefighters in our system, but that is part of the, the role here in the Phoenix Fire Department.
What always strikes me is, you know, the fires are the thing that you're going to see on the evening news, you know, the big fire, warehouse fire, and those are dangerous, and obviously, you guys risk life and limb to put those out, but that's not the bulk of the time spent on the job, I wouldn't imagine. And I assume that's probably changed dramatically since your dad's day in the department, when I assume, you know, you had older buildings, not nearly as many safety features, not nearly as many requirements for builders, and I'm sure there were a lot more fires probably per capita, is my guess, and a lot more firefighter time was taken up with actual fires rather than what you're talking about now, the medical services. Is that, is that fairly accurate?
Yes, I would say yes, and I, for the Phoenix Fire Department, I believe it's because we've evolved more in the medical services. You know, in the mid-'80s, the Phoenix Fire Department, oh, excuse me, let me go back a little bit, but in the early '70s, mid-'70s, we trained our first 12 paramedics in our system, and the chief at the time.
So prior to the '70s, didn't even have paramedics.
Didn't have paramedics. We started.
Fun fact for people at home, maybe not fun for the people who are living in the 1960s, but, but that's just, that just shows the change that we're talking about over the last half century.
Yes, most definitely. And so from there, the, the vision of the Phoenix Fire Department from maybe primarily firefighting really moved into the medical services, and in the mid-'80s, the city of Phoenix and the Phoenix Fire Department moved into transportation services for the community. So then again, that added a more, another resource and layer into our system, and then from there on, we've continued to expand, training paramedics within our system, working with community colleges. We have continued to look at, you know, the different types of equipment that's coming in. We have a very robust medical services section. We're training right now, we have about 36 paramedics in our system. We'll be training another 36 here in the near future, and our goal is, over the next several years, to probably train about 400 medics in our system in the next five years.
And I was thinking about this question this morning when I was at the gym. A fellow was wearing a, I think it was paramedic training course or something from Paradise Valley Community College. He was wearing a T-shirt that talked about the program he had clearly been in. Do you have to take those classes to sign up, or is that something that it helps? And if you're interested in this line of work, that's a good place to start, but do we do all the training that you need?
So part of, part of the process is the, if someone is applying for our position as a Phoenix firefighter, is you have to be EMT certified, and a lot of, and that is done through the community college. So that's pretty, pretty known that the first step is to obtain that, and that's, obtaining your EMT certification is definitely a commitment, you know.
Good afternoon. We'll call to order the May 2nd policy session of the Phoenix City Council and we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you. We'll begin with council information and follow-up requests. And I think we have two PowerPoints, so why don't we start with District Four, Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Let's see. Got to get myself situated. All right. As you see a picture, I want to start by shouting out to the Hospitality Training Academy in partnership with Unite Here Local 11 for providing free culinary training and bringing this amazing opportunity to the Valley. Congratulations to the first graduating class of the Prep Cooks. I saw one of the graduates out at the event on Saturday and then I figured out, okay, that's the connection where I had seen her. Next slide. The Central Avenue Corridor Growth Discussion Panel. Communities from District Four neighborhoods had a discussion about mixed-use development and affordability during, down Central Avenue Corridor Growth Discussion Policies. Special thanks to planning and development and our speakers and providing information. We will be having another one on transportation, walkability, micro-mobility, sidewalks, a number of things. Next slide. Color Festival and Resource Fair. We attended and participated in the Carl Hayden High School, at Carl Hayden High School. There, they were able to make stress balls out of rice and balloons. So I want to thank the many student-run clubs and organizations at Carl Hayden for developing and putting this event together. And I also want to thank the Arizona Diamondbacks for helping sponsor it. Next slide. Empowering Generations 5K. This is the Mel Hannah 5K organized by the African-American Reconstruction Team on Earth Day was a huge success. The African-American Reconstruction is a student-run team led by African-American youth that has worked out of my office for the past couple of years. The money raised at the 5K will go towards a scholarship for youth in the community and will help fund the African-American Reconstruction Summer Teen Conference. Next slide. West Phoenix Public Transit Information Session. Valley Metro shared their West Phoenix High Capacity Transit Alternative Analysis within the residents at Maryville. This is demonstrating the high capacity and we also are out looking, doing the BRT piece two. So I want to thank the residents for providing information, or feedback really. Information, yeah, information, informations session. This is for the North Encanto Historic District. Public Works and NSD attended and it was talking about moving trash bins from alleys to the front of their homes and what the process is in the relocation. And they have helped with some comments and feedback on notifying the community and how to go about doing it. There was a little, a little rocky, but we got there. And also told them about the gated alley program. Next slide. I want to say I attended a community event, Poderen Action at Suenyo Park. I want to thank, they were talking about the Pueblo's budget and it was a great fair with a lot of community people and people participating. What I have to say is it was good to see my old friend Carmen. She ran the Block Watch Grants. She was the chair of the Block Watch Grants, but more importantly, Carmen and I go way back to organizing days. And so it was great to see her. I didn't recognize her at first and I was like, oh my gosh, Carmen. So it was great to see her at, at the Poderen Action. So I want to thank them for hosting that for the community. Next slide. May Coffee Chat. May 3rd, 2315 North Seventh Street. We'll be talking about homeless encampments and cleanup, street outreach, community updates and safety tips. And as I spoke earlier, now we're having the second series of Central Avenue Corridor Growth Discussion Panel, connectivity and mobility. We will be discussing that May 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Memorial Hall Steel Indian School Park. And final slide. If you want to contact me, here's my contact information. Appreciate it. Thank you for giving me the time, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Pastor. We'll go next to our next PowerPoint from Vice Mayor Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. This April, we celebrated Earth and Valley Bike Month across District Seven. Once the PowerPoint is up, you'll see a picture of the D7 team here at Chispa's Earth Day Festival at Reposo Park. And May will be a big month for climate action. Next slide. Yesterday, I joined Mayor Gallego, MAG and the Office of Heat Response and Mitigation to let residents know about Heat Awareness Week. Phoenix saw its first hundred-day degree, 100-degree day this weekend and we're now hard at work providing critical heat outreach across our city, especially for our most vulnerable residents like older adults in our unsheltered community. From taking advantage of our weatherization programs to checking that your loved one's AC is in good condition, now is the time to get heat ready. My team, like last year, will be taking over some of volunteer Phoenix's heat shifts and we welcome residents to join us. Next slide. We're also kicking off May by hosting a multitude of neighborhood meetings and activating our parks. This Saturday, May 6th, I'll be at Burton Bar Library delivering a central city community update. Join us at 10:00 AM to get updates on our crisis assistance program as well as our parks and homelessness efforts. On May 8th, we'll be joining the CISA Poder neighborhood association in West Phoenix for an early Mother's Day breakfast to celebrate the anniversary of the Merry Circulator that we secured in the budget a couple of years ago. And on May 11th, we're heading to Smith Park to get feedback from the community on their proposed summer programming. And speaking of summer activities, I wanted to remind everyone that this Thursday, swimming lesson registration will open for our Phoenix pools. Next slide. The last few weeks have been busy with community conversations on climate. I attended one of our Transportation Electrification Action Plan workshops in South Phoenix and I was so impressed with the turnout. The vast majority of attendees were Spanish speakers and were asked their biggest concerns and barriers when it comes to transportation in their community. Many residents noted a need for better street lighting, more tree and shade canopy and traffic calming, and showed interest in electric micro-mobility as a key way to get around once those improvements are made. Just want to thank city staff that attended and shout out to unlimited potential for assisting with the outreach and hosting us at the Brooks Academy. On the air quality front, my team and I have been working with Assistant Manager, City Manager Lori Baze to secure 16 air purifiers for the Villa Verde neighborhood in my district. This is a neighborhood that lives next to a recycling plant that has often seen some really horrific fires and as a result have to deal with poor air quality. I want to thank Phoenix Fire for working incredibly hard to keep them in compliance and our city leadership for working with the county to work on more avenues for improved accountability on this front. And a special shout out to Zach Wallace. He's actually the one who physically helped my team deliver these air purifiers to residents and they were extremely grateful for that. And on water security, we've been working with Water Department and the Office of Innovation to engage startups who approach our offices with innovative ideas. We're looking forward to an annual or semi-annual request for information program to have a path to pilot these innovative ideas in Phoenix. Next slide. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I'll be spending time in the Levine School District on Thursday morning to stuff over 1,000 bags for students and families. And I know that our Phoenix Youth and Education Committee is also partnering with Valley of the Sun United Way to reach even more Phoenix schools with free goodies. Our educators are some of the hardest-working, patient and creative individuals in our city, so let's celebrate them. Looking forward to that. Next slide. On the same note of teachers and issues that they shouldn't be spending time with, it seems like every other day we're receiving a text about a gun found in our schools. I recently got an email from Alicia Vink, who is a passionate Phoenix Elementary School Board member, who wants to do more on this issue. So from equipping parents with safe storage information to roundtable discussions with parents and PD this summer, we will be working on a series of events to ensure that D7 schools are talking about the rising gun violence epidemic happening nationally and have the right education here in Phoenix. This issue is incredibly close to my heart and I look forward to working with our community and council on common sense solutions. And final slide. May is Asian American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a celebration of the culture and contribution of our Asian communities. I look forward to recognizing many of our community leaders and organizations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start with, yesterday I had the great honor of attending the ribbon cutting for a beautiful new turf field at James W. Rice Elementary in our Alhambra, Alhambra Elementary School District. I want to thank Alhambra Superintendent Ceci Mays for her continued vision and leadership, bringing great projects like this one to our community. This new facility is a huge win for over 800 students enrolled at James W. Rice for all the students and families across the Alhambra District and all of the neighborhoods around it. I want to let residents know that on Monday, May 8th, there will be an opioid community forum at the Maryville Community Center starting at 5:30. Our newly created Public Health Office will be holding these community forums to provide information and resources regarding the opioid crisis for our residents. I also want to thank our Public Health Advisor Nicole for coming out to speak at our District Five Neighborhood Leaders Meeting last week. We had over 30 participants in the meeting, leaders from our HOAs, block watches, neighborhood associations and other community groups. And they were very interested to learn the role we can play in addressing the opioid crisis. So thank you to Nicole and her team for their continued work on such an important issue. Also, on Monday, May 8th, I'm excited to join Mayor Gallego and the staff of our amazing library department for the ribbon cutting at the new Palo Verde Library Children's Area. This new space features custom-designed museum-quality interactive pieces created by a local Phoenix company that creates interactive spaces exclusively for public libraries and museums across the country. I am also excited because Palo Verde Library staff has, have also created a library scavenger hunt and each child that completes it receives a free book. A special thank you to the Library Foundation and American Family Insurance as providing a selection of 500 books at different reading levels and languages. Finally, on Tuesday, May 9th, I will be attending the Arizona Diamondbacks game to accept their $10,000 donation to sponsor swim lessons in our city pools. As the Chair of our Community and Culture Investment Subcommittee, I want to personally thank the Arizona Diamondbacks for their continued commitment to our city residents. As a mom of two boys, I know how much of a difference this donation will go in making sure children can learn and thrive over the summer months. And a big thank you to our wonderful Parks and Recs Department to making sure donations like this go to serve the, the best of our residents in all of our different districts. And also just want to give a big shout out for everyone that attended the High Capacity Transit Meeting in Maryville at the community center. It was, it was a great success. We had over 40 people attend the meeting. They had from snacks to brinca brincas. Marcus, I don't know if Marcus is in the room, but big shout out to him for helping with the turnout, working together with our office. Big shout out to Emmanuel and Deborah and everyone that made this happen. Very excited to see what happens after that meeting. And with that, I am done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Early Monday morning, one of our officers was brutally attacked. I want to thank the Phoenix Fire Department for the, the help they provided that officer and getting him to St. Joseph Hospital very quickly so he could be treated. I'd also like to thank the staff at St. Joseph Hospital for the treatment he has received and will continue to receive as he is still there. I'd particularly like to thank Dr. Weiner for canceling all of his private patient appointments to provide surgery to our officer. This officer was attacked by an individual who was suspected of domestic violence. And after answering the pleas of a distressed woman who flagged his vehicle down crying out for help, our officer was ambushed by the suspect in an unprovoked altercation. The suspect knocked the officer out with the first punch and then proceeded to beat and stomp on our unconscious officer on his face, all of which was recorded on the officer's body-worn camera. Officer was rushed to the hospital with multiple injuries and required immediate surgery on his face to repair the damage. The suspect was booked by additional responding officers and taken straight to jail. Our officers worked directly with the county attorney, Rachel Mitchell, on the investigation and provided detailed information. Due to the disgusting and violent nature of the act, the county attorney's office requested $100,000 cash bail in order to keep the suspect off the streets while he awaits trial. However, the judge hearing the case decided to set bail at $60,000 cash or 10% bond, meaning the suspect only needs to come up with $6,000 cash for a bond in order to be released. One more time, our county attorney asked for $100,000 cash bail and the judge is allowing this violent suspect to get out of custody for a $6,000 cash bond. We as council members can sit up here and provide our officers with all the tools they need to proactively and safely patrol our streets and keep our families safe. But the other part of that equation is the judicial system. That is why my office will be working closely with our city court system and the county attorney, Rachel Mitchell, to focus on cracking down on crime and holding people accountable for their actions. County Attorney Mitchell has already assured me she will be prosecuting this violent criminal to the full extent of the law. Although this judge was lenient on bail, we will ensure the judge understands the full nature of this violent and unprovoked attack when sentencing so that justice will be served for our officer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that important update. Do we have any additional council member updates? All right, we will. I wanted to congratulate the Water Department and the Office of Arts and Culture on their great recognition from Arizona Forward, winning a top award. Councilwoman Pastor Guardado and Vice Mayor Ansari and I were able to join for that celebration and the city was also recognized for a variety of different projects, including our food work, South Central Transit Oriented Development Plan and more. Also wanted to thank the library and the Phoenix Public Library Foundation for a wonderful commemoration for Deborah Dillon. Deborah led our Youth and Education Program. Deborah led our youth and education programs and created College Depot, which has helped so many of our residents get access to financial aid and college admission. And we are remembering her, Deborah Dillon's legacy, at the Burton Bar Library and would encourage people to visit the great facility. The city manager and I were able to join last night to recognize Deborah Dillon's legacy. Also want to congratulate St. Vincent de Paul, who broke ground this morning on a hundred-bed facility. The city of Phoenix contributed $6 million towards that facility. It includes workforce programs as well as programs for people who have pets and who want to be near their pets. Councilwoman Hud Washington and I were able to join them, as well as our deputy city manager Gina Montez and the Office of Homeless Solutions. And they wanted me to send their thanks to city staff for all of their hard work on that project. With that, I will turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Barton.
Mayor, members of the council, first and foremost, I want to just very briefly thank you for the leadership and guidance that you've given us over the last year as we've started working on this budget. And it actually predates that. It goes back to when we first started dealing with COVID, as you know. We had a lot of tough decisions to make, and even before that, the Great Recession, our employees, they took it on the chin and they continued to do the best work that they could. And I think this budget speaks to how you feel about your City of Phoenix employees. You know, we've got over 15,000 positions in our budget, about 15,946.9 to be exact, if I remember correctly. And again, next year's budget is a testament to what they can do and what they will do for the residents of Phoenix. I do want to also acknowledge the Budget and Research Department, who goes through this process each and every year, and the work that they do to produce a budget that is recognized across the country by the ICMA, by the GFOW, and the way they go out and actually reach out to the community to try to get feedback. And I think today's additions and changes speak to the feedback that we did hear at those budget hearings. And I also want to say that the commitment that you made to employees this year, it's already starting to pay off. I sit in new employee orientation every Thursday morning, not because I have to, but because I like doing it. I like speaking to the employees and talking about what this organization can mean to you if you if you give your career to it. And I have been more than pleased in seeing that those rooms are filling up again. The last couple that I've been to, the rooms were at capacity. And the passion and the diversity that sits in those rooms is going to be an exciting addition to this to this organization. And so I would just like to turn it over to Amber, who will now walk you through the changes that we're proposing from the trial budget that was presented a few weeks ago.
Thank you, Jeff, Mayor, members of the council, and residents. Today, I will be going over the proposed 2324 city manager's budget. I'm going to start today by doing a recap of our general fund budget status, as well as talk about the community feedback that we solicited and received on the proposed trial budget. I'll then go over the proposed changes, as well as talk about the budget calendar and next steps for legal budget adoption. So to recap our general fund status for fiscal year 2324, our estimated resources are $2,250,000,000. We take that less our estimated expenses of $1,891,000,000, and we arrive at our general fund surplus of $134,000,000. Council, you are required to adopt a balanced budget every year, so I'll be going over the proposed changes and how to allocate the $134,000,000 surplus. To make those changes and recommendations, we solicited community feedback on the proposed budget. We did that through 12 community budget hearings held from April 3rd to April 15th, also through our interactive budget tool Fund Phoenix on our website, as well as comments we received directly to the Budget and Research Department. What we heard was overall support for trial budget additions in the areas of employee compensation increases, additions for public safety and human services, additional resources for homelessness in the gated alley program, as well as for community arts grants, and for additions for the Parks Department. In total, we had 720 comments from 362 residents. Our city manager took into account the resident feedback and has proposed changes to the trial budget, totaling the $1 million that was reserved for resident feedback. I'm going to briefly go over those changes and then I'll talk about all of the additions. For the community arts grants funding, this was proposed at $125,000 in the trial budget. We are recommending to increase that to $250,000. For cricket, $250,000 to increase field opportunities. For parks maintenance, $125,000. $250,000 for the Phoenix Day Early Childhood Education Center. And then for our Streets Department, $250,000 for a street sweeper for bike lanes, as well as to clean up washes and medians. So our general proposed additions of $134,000,000 would be allocated. $114,000,000 to employee compensation. Council, you know we have significant vacancies citywide, about a 17% vacancy rate. We want to try to get that down to anywhere to 7% to 8%. We're dealing with still a competitive labor market. We want to make sure we have resources to invest our employees, to attract the best talent, to deliver services to the community. Also included is $20 million in critical additions to the budget in council and community priority areas. Those include in the areas of continuity of services for vulnerable populations at $7.6 million, enhanced public safety responsiveness and criminal justice support at $3.8 million, for healthy neighborhoods and community enrichment, $3.6 million, and then $5 million for our contingency or rainy day fund. Employee compensation, $114 million is proposed, as I discussed back on March 21st with the trial budget. Market-driven employee compensation increases are needed, so we can make sure we have a highly skilled workforce to deliver services to the community. That's why 85% of the surplus is dedicated for that purpose. We want to reduce those vacancy rates. That amount would also cover the amounts negotiated with our employee labor groups for next fiscal year, as well as put a $20 million set aside in the general fund for 24, 25, and beyond, as we will be negotiating with our labor groups in less than 12 months. I also want to mention that the class and comp study results will be coming to the council later this month. We have incorporated estimated impacts from the implementation of that study already in the proposed budget for next fiscal year. For continuity of services for vulnerable populations, $7.6 million is proposed. All of these additions are for our Human Services Department, including $950,000 for the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program and Victim Advocacy Services. Both of those programs are going to see reduced funding next fiscal year from grants. $600,000 is proposed for Behavioral Health Engagement Team contract to help individuals in our community who are struggling with mental health and substance abuse issues. Also for the Phoenix Cares Program, this would increase the outreach contract $600,000 to target areas in the city with high concentrations of encampments. Also, funding for homelessness. This would address certain areas of the Strategies to Address Homelessness Plan. $5.2 million is proposed. This would provide for operations at homeless shelters that could serve up to 420 people per night, roughly 1,200 individuals per year. And then $250,000 in one-time funding for the New Leaf's Phoenix Day Early Childhood Education Center. This would provide affordable education services for infants on up. For our Fire Department, 31 new sworn positions. These would staff new Station 74 located at 19th Avenue and Chandler Boulevard, as well as a new rescue unit. $3.5 million, this would go towards helping to reduce emergency response times. For our Law Department, funding to replace reduced grant funding next year for the Victims of Crime Act grant. This grant helps to provide assistance to victims of crime, $350,000. There's also proposed additional positions in the Law Department to work on the Department of Justice investigation, and those positions next fiscal year would be paid for with general fund vacancy savings. For the Police Department, new civilian positions for investigations and to further civilianization efforts. All of these positions would be paid for with existing police budgeted dollars for next fiscal year. Healthy neighborhoods and community enrichment, total $3.6 million. For our Library Department, adding two new municipal security guards at the Burton Bar Library for $130,000. For Neighborhood Services Department, increasing resources for the gated alley program, $350,000. This would bring the ongoing general fund amount to just over $800,000 to allow for 77 new gated alley segments per year. Also for Neighborhood Services, moving positions that right now are funded by the Community Development Block Grant. This would free up resources in that grant to help low and moderate income residents, $220,000 for those. For our Office of Arts and Culture, we also heard from residents during our community feedback process, more money was desired for the Community Arts Grants Program. This increases that amount from $125,000 to $250,000. This would bring the annual amount in the general fund to $1.45 million. For our Parks and Recreation Department, adding 22 positions. 14 of those would be to establish two urban park ranger teams to work at night, as well as add a new forestry crew to support the Tree and Shade Master Plan to help maintain all of the trees that we're planting, roughly $2 million. Also for cricket, $250,000 to establish up to three new cricket field locations. Our Parks Department will also be working with partners to explore options to expand sites in the future. And then increased funding for park maintenance, $125,000. Next year, part of that funding will go towards improvements at Suenyo Park. For our Street Transportation Department, we also heard from the community about a desire for additional resources to help clean up washes and medians. $150,000 is proposed. And then for our Bike Community, increasing resources to purchase a sweeper, a street sweeper dedicated to cleaning bike lanes, $100,000. Now for our non-general funds, these are our special revenue funds and enterprise funds. We do have proposed additions, $1.5 million. That includes adding two new airport access agents, as well as 10 vehicles for the airport bureau at the airport. Also for the Planning and Development Department out of the Development Services Fund, additional $500,000. This would go towards helping new positions to help manage Shape Phoenix, as well as for their electronic plan review team and a human resources position. Our Regional Wireless Cooperative Office, this is the office that works also with member cities to help support our public safety radio network. They need another accountant position, roughly $50,000, or $50,000, sorry. And then a new addition from our trial budget, $50,000 for the Public Transit Department. This is to increase bus stop maintenance to do additional cleanings. So next up in our budget adoption process, after today, I'll come back to the council on May 16th requesting action on the budget. This step is very important. Without that, we cannot move into our legally required budget adoption process. That will start on May 31st with tentative budget adoption, June 14th with final budget adoption, and then we end the process on July 3rd with property tax levy adoption. That concludes my presentation, and we can answer any questions.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all your hard work, Amber. I know it's a task, because you have to talk to all of us about some of our wishes. You have to talk to the public. You have to talk to all the different city departments, and you always come up with a very successful budget proposal. I am especially happy to see what we're doing for our city staff. They are very deserving of it over the years. They've made a lot of sacrifices for us, and so I really appreciate that we're going to look out for them this coming year, and I wholeheartedly support that. I'm very excited about other proposals. I know that in Council Districts 1, 2, and 3, we heard a lot about cricket. And so thank you so much for helping us with that. I do have a quick question, though. We had talked about trying to look at setting aside some money in planning and development so that we could help with affordable housing permit. And I think you guys have maybe a compromise, and if you could talk about that, because I think that's important. I think we do need to really send a message that we're here to support affordable housing and that we want to assist them in any way we can. And we had talked about setting aside some money, but I know I had a kind of a quick conversation with the city manager, so if you could maybe talk a little bit about that.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Stark, I think that's a great idea. If you have specific questions about the actual process or the program itself, I'd have to defer to Alan and Josh. But I know you guys had a conversation at CCI a few weeks ago and talked about, you know, upwards of $2 million being allocated to waive permit fees for specific types of development. What I would suggest is, given that, you know, we have to adopt a balanced budget, and without taking something away from what we're proposing, you know, we have to identify additional resources. So my recommendation is that we kind of look at this as a longer process. One, I think we could identify the money either from year-end, when Amber comes back to you in late September, and we talk to you about the results of how we finish the year. Given some of our vacancies, it's highly likely that we end up to the good, and so we could reserve some of those funds at that time to be seed money for that program. We could also wait until October, when we start our official technical review process and go through our department reviews, to identify savings that way. I think what we do in either of those scenarios, we give Alan and Josh the time that they need to really evaluate what this program looks like, what the parameters are going to be, what types of programs and projects they're going to avail these types of waivers to. And then by the time they do that, we would have funds available to do that. Then as far as that program, in the first year, it would almost be kind of like a pilot. We could evaluate it, see how it's working, see where it needs to be changed. And then during the course of next year, for the 2425 budget, we could have the planning department submit a potential supplemental to make that program a continuous program for the 2425 year.
Thank you. And Mayor, I appreciate that. I do think we probably need to have a pathway to make sure that we're doing the right thing when we do allocate money to affordable housing. I know we probably need a definition and a process, so I understand that. And I hope you engage the council as you go through that. I certainly have some ideas when it comes to the process. But I do think it's important. I know in Glendale, they've already introduced a program now. I know there are general fund departments, so they can handle it a little differently than we can, so I know it takes us a little bit more time. But I do think it's important that we pursue this. We need to address affordable housing, and I think this is just a tool that will be wonderful to use in the future. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I just want to thank staff. I mean, this is a very robust budget. I'm very excited for everything that's coming in. I just had a couple of questions just on the new items that were added. In the addition of the street sweeper to clean bike lanes, going to be, is that going to be utilized across the whole city?
Yes, Councilwoman Guardado, Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. So the street sweeper wouldn't be designated to only one area of the city. It could be used to, you know, clean the bike lanes of all bike lanes, essentially.
Okay. And I know we, I know, I know this is just getting started, and we're adding a lot more bike lanes. I know that, you know, we, you know, there's a plan. I think we all are seeing a lot more bike lanes in all of our districts. I know District 5 has a lot that are coming, that are coming our way. Is there a, just like the way we do with bulk trash, will there be something on the website or where people can see when their bike lanes are going to be cleaned? Like, what's going to be the system around that?
Councilwoman Guardado, let me bring Streets Transportation Director Keeney Knutson to the table. He can maybe address that. I do think it's important, given what you said, you know, we did have some hiccups with bulk trash this year, so the more we can communicate, the better. I will also say, before Keeney speaks, we did have a very positive meeting with office from GOHS yesterday, from the governor's office. And there's also some promising opportunities there to do some additional funding for things that we weren't funding in the past. But in regards to your question, I'll ask Keeney to reference that.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, members of the council, with our existing sweeping operations that we do on city streets, those are traditionally done, or typically done, or we do that for dust control, to make sure, we have a non-attainment area here in the city, and so it's related to some of our air quality concerns we have here. So we do actually publish our schedule for street sweeping when we're going out and the frequency we're going out with each street. We have not talked about how we would put the schedule together for this, but once we have the street sweeper in place, I don't see it to be a problem to make sure that that is publicly available, so people can see when we're going out and sweeping. And I'll echo, yes, that street sweeper will be used citywide and wherever we have these protected bike lanes and buffered bike lanes, that we need to have that street sweeper to be able to clean.
Right, because I, you know, there's just a lot of different parts of our city where folks, you know, I know we're doing a lot of education and I'm doing a lot of information sessions where we're letting people know how to request a new recycling bin, you know, how is it that they can maneuver the city website in terms of knowing. There's a lot of people that still don't understand when their bulk trash is being picked up. So I think it's important that we continue with these, as we're adding these services, that we figure out a way, how do we let people know when it's coming to them? I see here that we're also going to be putting in money to cleaning up the bus stops. I would ask for that same thing around the bus stops. Like, we just need to make sure that people understand where they can request the services, when is it that the services are going to be coming to them. I think all of this is great. I appreciate listening to community and doing some of these changes. I like the fact that we are going to be moving in that direction. In terms of the medians, I know that I get a lot of requests from a lot of constituents on what's happening in our medians, and I think that we should do that again through a system, right? And I'm hopeful that we will get a system where people know when things are going to be cleaned, when things are going to be changing for them. I think that's important. We'll make sure to get the information out, but making sure that we have a robust timeline on when these services are going to be coming around throughout the whole city. on when these services are going to be coming around throughout the whole city, I think that's important. Does that make sense, Jeff? Okay. So, with that, I want to again thank all of you for the incredible work that everyone is doing. I think you said it best, Jeff, like our workers worked around the clock during the pandemic. I don't think any of us were giving a pamphlet that said, "This is the way COVID runs." I think we were, you know, the city had to work together to bring everyone together. I think our workers were definitely at the front of the lines, making sure that they continue to give the best services. As we were trying to figure out this pandemic and figure out what was right, what was wrong, so I definitely appreciate the money that's going into making sure that we compensate people for all of their hard work that they've been doing. I also want to thank the over 1,150 residents from District Five who took the time to fill out the 2023 Budget Community Engagement Survey that my team did. I want to thank Emanuel, Melina, and Deborah from my office for their work in reaching out to so many residents, from community events to door-to-door outreach to talking to folks at our local small businesses. We exceeded our goal of at least 1,000 surveys from District Five, and we saw strong support from our efforts to invest in safer, stronger communities. Residents in my district talked a lot about the issues at the city, from the lack of 911 and crime stop operators, to issues with bulk trash collection, to the challenges we had opening our pools, or that we still have in filling our Head Start classrooms. We know that, at the basic level, all of these issues have been a result of low pay for our city workers. This is why I am happy to see this budget addresses low wages hit on. We are allocating 85% of the $114 million to wage increases for our city employees. I am happy to support this budget because of the investment it is putting into the people that make our city great when we take care of them. I know that they will have the resources and support to take care of our residents. Also, excited about the third shift for our parks as well, for our park rangers. I think that's very needed and something the community has talked to us about for a very long time. And again, I want to thank our city manager, his team, everyone for making this happen and for listening to all of us as we all talked about what were some of the greatest needs, and I am very happy to be able to support this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo everyone, I think this is a very, very strong budget. And just from my personal experience, the last couple of years on the city council, every year, it's very exciting to see where we invest, and this year, thrilled to see all of the investments in our employees. And also, there's some really, really exciting pieces, the 22 positions for our forestry crew and the urban park ranger teams. I think that's super exciting. I'm thrilled that we're investing more in our emergency shelter program and in outreach services. In my district, the behavioral health teams that have been out at 51st Avenue and Baseline and Levine have been very successful, and I mentioned this before, but residents have told us several times that they've seen a marked improvement as a result of the work of these teams. I'm glad that we'll be able to deploy those teams across other issue areas in the city. The two areas that I would like to see funded in this budget that are not, I agree with Councilwoman Stark, we had a very robust discussion in CCI, so I appreciate the answers around timing, Jeff, but I think, you know, we talked about Glendale's program in particular, the fact that they're able to waive fees for affordable housing projects. I know I have heard feedback from the development community that while state tax credits are great, there are still oftentimes issues with funding these projects. So, as expediently as we could move on a process for that kind of a program, I think would be great. The second one for me is public bathrooms. This is something that I have been advocating for since I have been on the city council. I think when you look at other major cities across the United States, there are public bathrooms available in the downtown core, near public transit stations for residents to use, you know. Most of the businesses in the downtown area have very clear signs that say, you know, "No bathrooms for public use," and so I think we should be providing that amenity to our residents. And we've also talked about this multiple times in the CCI subcommittee, and we have, I know, talked to some companies that offer single-stall restroom options. So, if that is something that we could add in this year's budget, I would be grateful. I think I'd like us to pilot bathrooms similar to the Portland Lou model that are sturdy, their vandalism-proof and easy to maintain and clean. These models save costs over time and with less staff time needed to maintain them and have security features like automatic lighting and foot-level grading that keep our residents safer. So, it would be probably along the lines of the cricket investment if we were to add that in the budget, which I think our residents deserve. So, other than that, I'm really grateful and thank you all so much for your work.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Amber, I just want to thank you and staff, who I met in the elevator as we were coming to the meeting. I want to thank you because I know, I understand what stress you were under. I was probably one of the main council people pushing for more meetings and pushing for getting out into communities, so I appreciate you accommodating. I want to thank for the arts piece because they did show up and were very vocal about what they would like to see in the budget, so I want to appreciate that you heard that. The other piece is the addition of the Phoenix Day Early Childhood Education Center. That is important. It is in a heart of a vadio, a Hispanic vadio, has been there for a very long time and has served that area and the need of that area, so I want to thank you for doing that. The other piece is the gated alleys, because most of us are advocating and pushing for the gated alleys, and I'm sure they're getting a lot of information and spending their money. But, in the equity piece, is specifically in the street maintenance and in the bike lanes and everything. I would like to see it actually mass, a schedule, and demonstrating that equity is happening across all our districts. So, I would like to see a physical schedule of how, what bike lanes or what's happening and where the bike lanes are across the whole districts, and how are we going to be equitable and making sure what is happening is happening. I think some of the cleaning areas, if stronger neighborhoods or more vocal neighborhoods push and push, then they get those services. And the neighborhoods that don't push or unaware of how to vocal, give a voice to an issue, then are neglected. And so, I think you're going to start to hear that from us, and not you, Amber, but staff in general, about where's the equity across our state, across Phoenix, our state too, I guess. I guess we would like some more money from the state. So, appreciate everything that you have done. I think it's a good budget, most importantly. I am a strong supporter for our employees and making sure our employees are compensated of what they deserve. But not only that, the compensation piece will come out, and I have a feeling we're going to have to compensate more. We are competing with other cities, but we're also competing with companies and private. And they are leaving, they are so close. I don't know what happened, there is a certain, next five years, a mass exodus of retirements. And to be able to fill that space, but most importantly, fill the knowledge. And we're filling it now of those that don't have the knowledge and saying, "Wait, we did this, this, and this." And so, I think this is one way of rewarding them by compensation and telling them, "We care about you." So, I appreciate the fact that we, as a collective, demonstrated that we can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you to our entire city staff and Budget and Research for this important process and important budget. I think it addresses a lot of the things we've heard from our community. We have heard a lot from folks that we, as development happens, we need to get permits done quickly, and I hope this budget will address that. Also, have heard about public records, and hopefully, we can move forward in this area. There's some important positions that are becoming permanent, including in the Office of Heat Response to make sure that we can address longstanding challenges and in business retention and expansion. On the economic development side, I'll repeat my comments from last year. I think our international programs have been some of the most beneficial for diversifying our economy. One of the great lessons of the downturn with 2008 is that we wanted to be more diverse and have more partnerships in different industries, so that if one sector was heavily hit, we'd have opportunity elsewhere. There's a very exciting opportunity in Mexico right now with more chances to nearshore manufacturing, and as we excel in areas like electric vehicle manufacturing, semiconductors, and more, there's a real interest there. We've also seen great interest from European countries such as Europe, and it would be great to have more economic development resources and staff who speak Mandarin and who can support those exciting investments and opportunities in the city of Phoenix. So, I'll continue to hope for more partnerships in those areas. Appreciate the comments that the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Stark made about affordable housing. I would love to see a project or program that allows us to support diverse and mixed-use programs, so that we can have units at a variety of different price points. I was recently visiting yet again Edison Eastlake, which has that 20% market rate units, and I think that has been a successful part of that project. So, I want to make sure as we design any future incentive programs that we look for exciting and mixed-use programs in that area. I am glad to see the increase in employee compensation proposed in the city budget. As our residents know, so much of what we deliver is based on the people who work here, whether you have safer cities or make sure that we do a good job delivering services at the library. It's really driven by people, and so when we can fill those vacancies, we can deliver for you more successfully. Was pleased that we were on Forbes' list of America's Best Employers last year and hope to have more recognition for this being a great place to work. And part of that is fun, exciting, engaging work, but part of it is also compensation. We have so many of the experts in different subject matter areas, and that's exciting and great for our residents. And making sure we have fair compensation will allow us to continue to have that expertise. No one works here to get rich, but it is important to compensate people fairly. I will join Councilwoman Pastore in being excited that we are investing in early childhood and Phoenix Day, one of our great institutions. So much history there, from being one of our very first and longest-standing investments in early childhood to helping Sesame Street test their content. And I think the infant room at Phoenix Day is going to be one of the happiest places in the city of Phoenix. There's just nothing better than happy, healthy babies to make you think about the future. The budget is also continuing to make investments in priority areas such as expanded housing resources and support for individuals experiencing homelessness. I started the meeting with comments about St. Vincent de Pau. Tomorrow, we will make several new or continue existing partnerships around housing and homelessness, and so that is something that continues to be a priority. One thing that does hang over this budget is the health of the economy, and I am very hopeful that Congress will raise the debt ceiling. We need the US government to pay their bills in order to have a healthy economy, and I do worry if the House of Representatives does not pass an increase in the debt ceiling, what that will mean for our economy. So, that's something we will need to keep in mind and continue to monitor, because this budget is based on the assumption that they will pass an increase in the debt ceiling, and we will continue to have the US economy working at the same level it is now, but that is not a certainty at this particular moment. Traffic and pedestrian safety continues to be a priority, and we did have folks engage around several corridors. Amber, we've talked about this, but you would language in here, it talks about, "We are able to fund improvements on safety on 19th Avenue, north of South Mountain?" And she said, "Yes, we do." Wonderful, thank you. Appreciate that, and we'll go to Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you, Jeff, as well as Amber and the Budget Department. You all work very diligently and do an excellent job in making sure that we stay focused and stay on budget and do so in a way that is best for Phoenix citizens and their employees. I am excited to see some of the new additions, cricket. It was great to learn about cricket and hear from our folks, and I think anytime we can get folks outside and doing their favorite recreation, that's a better thing for all of us. Also, thank you for the Phoenix Day, Early Education money. Our children are our most valuable resource, and providing them a strong foundation before they step foot in their regular kindergarten through 12th grade is so, so important. And this center has such an incredible history in Phoenix. It was really fun to get to tour it and learn about it, so thank you for that as well. I do have a couple of questions about the pilot program that was providing supplemental security services to 15 of our parks. That is scheduled to end at the end of July. And Amber, can you tell me, does the proposed budget have any money in it to continue that program?
Yeah, Councilwoman O'Brien, Mayor, members of the council, it's my understanding that it does, but I would ask for our Parks and Recreation Director to come to the table to speak about that contract specifically.
Thank you.
And I believe there's been some discussions and plans being talked about to address that point.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, Councilwoman O'Brien. I think the question is about the pilot program and funding, is that the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the funding that was used, Councilwoman, for the six-month pilot is still available. We were using salary savings from the Parks Department's budget to carry us through the pilot. That pilot is scheduled currently to go through July. That would be the conclusion of the six months for the approval of the pilot. We're prepared to try to extend that as needed to cover, to make sure there's not a gap in services between when security would end and when we would bring on the third shift park rangers that are in the budget currently.
Okay, thank you for that. And I support the third shift park rangers. I am concerned, however, that we're going to hire the 14 park rangers who will be responsible. I guess I should confirm that. The 14 park rangers for the third shift, they will monitor all 180-plus parks, correct?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman O'Brien, that is correct.
But our pilot program was specifically for 15 parks?
Councilwoman O'Brien, it is 12 parks that were approved.
Okay, thank you. So, I am concerned about trading 14, or I should say, 24 security officers that have four supervisors that are going to cover 12, that are currently covering 12 parks, for 14 people in the third shift that will cover 180 parks. One of those parks is in District One. It is a park that was considered top of the list for security concerns. And so, I can tell you that this pilot program has caused significant improvement in my area. So, how do we fix that?
Councilwoman O'Brien, Mayor, members of the city council, if the security, if it was the council's direction to continue security services beyond that trial period, we would need additional funding for that to happen.
And approximately how much additional funding would be needed in your budget to have an annual contract with Supplemental Security Service?
Based on the provider that we currently use, those numbers are approximately $1.1 million annually to continue those services. And Councilmember O'Brien, Mayor, members of the council, we can work with the Parks Department at year-end, as well as during tech review, to try to see if we can identify savings, if that was the will of the council, for them to continue that contract. So, that could be an option.
And I would also add, Councilwoman-
And I would also add, Councilwoman O'Brien, I think the one thing to remember is that contract, it also could be structured in such a way that it is kind of like on an as-needed basis contract. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have folks round the clock on that contract. We could structure it almost like a requirements contract, and it could be used to augment and supplement based on the hotspots and based on where the issues are. And so that could also have an effect of reducing the ongoing cost. But I think, again, given where we start the year off every year, given with the vacancies, I think there's an opportunity, like Amber said, to try and figure out a way to first, we always tell departments at the beginning of the year, we first look to the department that's going to bear the expense and try to get them to absorb the costs. And I think that's where we would start with parks on this one, too. The other thing I want to emphasize is, given, it sounds like there's a fair amount of support for this budget as it stands, the other thing that we can do is also work with HR early to try and make sure that those positions, those park ranger positions, get recruited earlier than waiting until July 1. And then that way, we could possibly have them up and running so that there isn't this gap between them. But we can work all through that, the logistics of all of that.
And I appreciate that. There has been a lot of good work done, especially in that area of my district, and so we've taken several steps forward. I don't want us to take any steps backwards, especially as we're doing other, we're doing other resources in the city. And so I can tell you there's concerns as we clean up the downtown area, that there's a huge fear in our other districts about displacement. And I know we lead with services, and I'm proud of that, but that is a fear from constituents that what we've cleaned up in our district will go backwards, especially without these additional resources in the evening to make sure we're following our rule, our park rules and our laws. So I appreciate that. I look forward to hearing how we'll make sure there's no gap in service and then we can continue to focus on our hotspots.
And I think the other thing I'd add, and Cynthia may smack me for this, but the reality is, we're, this, the 14 rangers that we're adding, that's new, right? We've never done that before, so we've got to really see how that goes. There may be, if it works great, just like the experiences that you referenced to the security contract, there may be a need to expand that if the budget looks good next year to add more of those, because 14 is nowhere near what we have during the daytime hours when the parks are open, granted, but we could also evaluate that for the '24-'25 budget as well, depending on the status of the budget, given the mayor's concern about the debt ceiling and Amber and I's fixation on the recession.
I do understand all of those concerns, and I really do appreciate what I would call a conservative approach to our budgets and appreciate that, just want to ensure that my constituents' concerns are expressed here as well. I know you guys do great work. Thank you, Cynthia, and thank you, Jeff and Amber.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I have a question towards that. As that contract fades out, how do you, how are you going to phase in the park rangers?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor. So we have a timeline right now that we're working on to actually post recruitment for these rangers in May, so that'll be earlier than when the funding becomes available in June in hopes of minimizing the gap that we were just talking about. We're also in the process of asking current rangers if they have an interest in working the third shift so that we know how many vacancies we will have on each shift to fill. And they'll go through the typical park ranger training to prepare them to be urban flatland park rangers to start with that transition, like our daytime shift urban rangers.
So it sounds like there is no overlap.
Councilwoman Pastor, with the, is it the overlap of the park rangers and the security services?
Correct.
And that's something that we have to work through right now, and so depending on how quickly we can onboard the rangers, that could be part of what we're looking at, to minimize the gap and have some overlap time to ensure that services are being provided.
Yeah, because my suggestion, or may I suggest, that there is some overlap and that the park rangers also understand, whatever park they're going to be situated at, what the challenges are from the safety people, I don't know what, the safety side, and be able to know, here's what we see daily. Now, and I think that is great concern with all of us because in the service of gap, then we're going to see a peak. And Councilwoman O'Brien did make a good point because when all the pieces are happening in the zone, they are moving into our districts, and we are going to then start to say, this is what's happening in the parks, and now we want this, this, and this. And that dynamic really amongst us and the departments need to be worked out so that we understand what's going to happen and what is going to be implemented, because I know conversations are happening, but I'm not completely aware of what's going to happen.
Sure, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, those are excellent points by you and Councilwoman O'Brien. We have great data. The security guards do daily reports every night, and so that is all information that we summarize and that we can make sure is shared during that overlap in onboarding with the third shift of rangers so they can see what type of activity, at least, we have information on overnight.
And Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, one thing that I think I can work on with Amber as well as with Cynthia and Inger is, since you go on summer recess and we don't have formal meetings, we could try to see if there's an opportunity to get additional contractual spending authority on that contract for the summer so that we have a gap to augment staffing, and we can work through that and try and get something back to you before you go on break to kind of fill in that void. But again, as I mentioned, I think the thought is, if we can start recruiting for some of those park rangers early, we can hopefully get some of those positions filled, again, knowing we won't get them all filled, but we'll do our best to have some overlap between the contract and the staffing.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm thinking ahead. I'm also thinking, when we open up our bathrooms and our restrooms, and they are open 24 hours, what does that look like and how do we provide safety in the night?
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to follow up a little bit on what Councilwoman O'Brien was saying, and I believe, and I apologize since I motioned to the mayor that I wanted to say something, I think the question may have been answered. But what's most important, we can't fall back. I think this park ranger program has the potential to really do, do for, you know, do for us what we want it to do and save police officers from answering those calls. But did I hear, Mr. Barton, did I hear you say that there's, the construction of the current contract allows for some flexibility, that it will allow us to make any adjustments we need to make? Because the one thing I don't want to see us do is fall backward, as Councilwoman O'Brien said.
Or Councilmember Robinson, Mayor members of the council, I think that's something I have to evaluate. I don't know that off the top of my head. What I was saying is, I think the contract has spending authority through a certain date, through a certain threshold, and I think we could evaluate in the next couple of weeks and try and get something back to you that gives us additional spending authority, and then maybe look at revamping the terms of said contract with an addendum that would allow us to do some as-needed spending, not necessarily a fixed amount of spending per month, but maybe on an as-needed basis, like a requirements contract, if you will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question. As we are hiring park rangers, do we think that we can still continue to prioritize as we, if we're not able to hire as many as we want all at once, can we still continue to prioritize those parks in the evening and then from there shifting as we, as we continue to hire more?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Guardado, that's something that we, prioritization amongst the rangers is something that we will continue to do. We continue to look at data that drives us to certain parks based on number of ranger visits, trespass notices issued, citations issued, so we will continue to use that system to help us know which parks are in the greatest need.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I'd just add to that again, just anecdotally, I mentioned early in my opening comments, I've been going to a lot of NEO, the New Employee Orientation Groups. The last couple I went to, there were tons of park rangers in there, so I don't know what Cynthia and them are doing, but they're hiring park rangers.
Thank you.
This is, I think, Councilman Kevin Robinson and I have been talking a lot about the Otukey Fire Station, but I think this is our first budget meeting together, so we should also do a celebration of how important that will be for safety in that part of our city, and certainly exciting that this budget has investments in every part of our city, but that one is, I think, worth highlighting since it's our first budget meeting together. Any additional comments? All right. We will then go to comments from the public, and I think we have, Michelle Duval will be first, followed by Craig Trippken.
Get the mic, hold my hand up. Three steps. And the podium is right there. And the microphones are a little bit to your left. And if you want to hold your hand up, the microphone's right here. And that's permanent. You're good to go. You're good to go.
Hi. I'm assessing transportation, public transportation, which includes paratransit, of course, which is provided by MV Transit and by Dyloride, Phoenix Dyloride. I know that they have new vans, but the vans will not be efficient enough, especially for the environment, and they're not efficient because of the gasoline. And so what I'm suggesting for the next budget is to consider what's going on in Scottsdale and Tempe and Mesa, where there's small contractors that have a smaller vehicle that will carry a wheelchair and maybe three or four other riders instead of having a larger vehicle like Phoenix Dyloride. And the other two points I want to bring up is, there's a lack of drivers on the weekends for paratransit, and that's not really abiding by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'm not sure if, how many people really realize what it's like to take paratransit. It's, it's very difficult to have, work 40 hours a week, and it takes you two hours to get home. So, and the quality of the ride is really not healthy for anyone with a disability or not. So I really, I'm really asking you to try out riding on Phoenix Dyloride, because the same contractor has been going on for over a decade. I think there needs to be a change, and I think the Phoenix, the city of Phoenix is so great that I think you guys want to treat people with a disability better. Thank you. And I just, and I'm just going to ask for assistance to exit the chamber, and I do have some notes that I'm going to suggest to send. Thank you.
Craig is next, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. I want to say two things. Number one, thank you for this budget. I support this budget. Thank you for your kind comments about Phoenix Day, a new leaf which handles, which does everything from domestic violence over to homeless, over to childcare and youth services. This is a very important program of ours, and I want to thank you for that. The second thing I want to say, and I've got a whole minute, 35, is, is I want to say that I support the budget, and more importantly, I think it's really important for, to under, to express that I work with a lot of cities, and Phoenix has an absolutely spectacular budget process. There is no place, no city in the Valley in which a person like me, a person like others in the audience, can go and have council people hear us and just as important, hear staff, have staff hear us. You have 20, 30 people at each staff meeting or at each budget hearing, and I know how important the interrelationship between the council and the staff is, and out of this process comes, I believe, a collective wisdom, which I think is, which I think says something about, about how the city of Phoenix is so well-run, and I support this budget and I appreciate it very much, all the time you all have spent, City Manager Barton, Budget Director Williams, and everybody else, all the managers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth is next, followed by Representative Ortiz.
I apologize for my lateness. Takes a minute to go through security. My name is Elizabeth Venable, born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona, and what I would like to say is to don't think your allocation to housing is significant enough to comply with dueling rulings saying that eventually you're going to have to spend a lot of money on housing. So I think that not only for the benefit of people in the city of Phoenix, normally it's a moral argument, right, but for the fiscal responsibility of the city and thinking about what could actually come in terms of needed monies to deal with these two dueling rulings, I think that this amount of money for housing is ridiculously low, and I think that you really should reconsider the allocation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Ortiz, followed by Frank Urban.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. I'm State Representative Annalise Ortiz. I represent the people of Maryvale and South Glendale in Legislative District 24. I'm here to thank my councilwoman, Councilwoman Yasemin Ansari, for your leadership, and I just wanted to say that I really support the idea of additional funding for the 24/7 public bathrooms and waiving the development fees for affordable housing projects. This is something we have seen in the city of Glendale on some of the affordable housing projects in my district, and we know the magnitude of the crisis we are in, and respectfully, I did hear the city manager say that perhaps we should wait on looking at this program to waive the development fees, but we cannot afford to wait. I am meeting people every day when knocking doors in the community who are facing eviction. They are dealing with rent increases, some as high as $500, and they have to find out how they're going to pay that money in the next 30 days or end up on the streets. And we know that oftentimes, these affordable housing projects do take a long time to build, so I ask you to please reconsider about whether we can waive those development fees this year because it is desperately urgent. I know that so many people would appreciate and benefit from that. I also want to say that we shouldn't be investing more in preventing homelessness and that many of the things in the budget, like the heat mitigation and the gated alleys and the park security, you know, we wouldn't necessarily need to be funding these at such a high rate if people had housing. And so the investment in getting people into stable housing first and ensuring that housing has wraparound services to get them any kind of other treatment or support services they might need is crucial. As I've said before, we are working at the state level to solve the affordable housing crisis, but we cannot do it alone. We need our city leaders to work with us in investing in housing, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Frank is next, followed by Faith Kearns. Do we have Frank Urban? We do not? Okay, then. Faith Kearns is next.
Faith also left.
Faith also left? Okay. Vidi Hernandez is next, followed by Ben Loughlin.
My name is Vidi Hernandez with Better in Action. I am here to talk about the $129 million that are getting added to increase police, for police funding, police raises, not just because of the money that is going to policing, but because what it means for our community. It means that actual solutions to the problems we are facing are not being invested in. It means that, as we have seen the data, that every year, even though the police budget increases, crime is not decreasing, which tells us that we continue to fund a solution and a strategy alone that is just not working. It means that the solutions to the problems that we are trying to bring, more police, more security, more rangers, we continue to ignore actually addressing root causes that will make the city safer, not only for our community, but for police, too. And that's not happening when we don't address And that's not happening when we don't address root causes of these problems. It means that we'll continue to fund failed safety solutions. It means that we're going to continue to ignore the voices of a community that for years have been saying what they actually need to be invested in, by problems that were created by the city, that were created by redlining, by sundown laws, that were created by racist policies that the city has done for years. Those problems are still not being solved. It means that this council continues to lag and make decisions with a lack of imagination and a lack of data, and looking at the data to actually address the root problems of our community. We are committed to continue to work on fighting and finding these solutions and these resources. We just finished a four-year process where we spoke with over 20,000 community members in Phoenix to talk about what do they need, what do they want, what are their dreams? I guarantee you, over 20,000 conversations, not one person said they wanted $500,000 for cricket fields. That was not what was named. And it is sad to see that that is the investment. So, invest on repair broken equipment, invest in public restrooms, invest in the things that you can do right now to solve issues. Thank you.
Ben is next, followed by Hassan Rafi.
Hi, my name is Ben Loughlin. I live in District 4. I'm here today because, as a parent and a Phoenix resident, the health and safety of our neighborhoods is extremely important to me. And seeing a billion dollars go into police in this next year is crushing. It's crushing because I know that a billion dollars wasted on force that at best can do nothing more than react to issues in our community, issues that could be addressed in real and tangible ways, but wasting a billion dollars on police does nothing to address the root causes of these issues, and often, its reactions are violent, results in families being separated and lives being destroyed. As part of our process to create the Pueblos budget, we spent four years listening to thousands of community members about their health and safety needs. And then, we spent a year having those community members prioritize issues and ideas to meet those needs. Rather than continuing to throw endless dollars at the police, figure out how to make tangible and lasting change in our neighborhoods. Funding repairs at Solano Park is a good first step, and we're excited about that, but it only goes so far, and it's frustrating to see twice as much money going to cricket as to park repairs. Fund the ideas in the Pueblos budget, and it will transform our city. You can start right now by funding free public transportation, expanding free Wi-Fi, and keeping the restrooms at the parks open 24 hours a day.
Hassan is next, followed by Shalay Flores.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Hassan Rafi. I'm the chairman of Arizona Cricket Association. We are basically formed in 1989, and we are a nonprofit organization registered with the state of Arizona, with sole purpose of playing and developing cricket in the state of Arizona. First of all, I really wanted to thank the city for allocating those funds. We've been basically trying, we've been one of the biggest renters of your all properties for the last 20, 30 years, and this is the first time we are getting some funds allocated to us, where we will have, actually, we'll have cricket pitches where we can play the sports properly. This will really help us play the sport properly, and also help us invite, you know, a youth development for the sports as well. And so, this also allows us to bring the people from out of states as well, which helps in the economy of the city as well. For the past 30 years, we've been playing in the grounds like Serena Park, Turtle Rock Basin, Sandpiper, and Buffalo Ridge. These fields have provided good venues to host cricket games in the past, and we plan to continue using these fields in the future. 250K is, towards cricket development is a great start, and I hope in the future, we have dedicated facilities for cricket, just like we have it for baseball and soccer. Our request is that the city allocate these funds to the city-owned fields, and they have been playing for the last 30 years, and those facilities that are open to the reserve to play, to all cricket-playing associations in the Valley. That will provide an unbiased way of allocating the budget, providing opportunities for youth to access and, you know, grow in this city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalay, next.
I'd actually like to move my time for Rebecca Denis. Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca. It will still be two minutes.
Well, I signed up as well, so can I not have her two minutes and my two minutes?
I'm sorry, I thought she wanted to switch the order. Just, just two minutes.
So, she can't donate her time to me?
I'm sorry, I misheard her. No, I thought she wanted to change the order. Just, you can have two minutes.
So, then, do you want to speak? If I, okay.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say. I have copies of the people's budget here. It all comes out to $465.5 million, which is half of what the Phoenix Police Department will be getting this year. The colloquial understanding that I have of the word insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting the same result. If people are leaving the police department, if they're not satisfied with the working conditions, if they're not satisfied with the pay, if you're just not filling those positions, I think it's time to go back to the drawing board about where those funds should be allocated in order to address our crises. Also, reconsider your definition of criminal, reconsider your definition of victim, reconsider your definition of homelessness. Measuring the success of a city and its decisions does not fall on the individual and individual's choices. Those folks in the zone, that's a manifestation of a failed city. It's systemic. It doesn't fall on the individual. It's just, it's just really appalling that it feels like the solution that we have to everything, from homelessness to even climate change, is more police, and it just doesn't make any sense. I lost my train of thought. It's okay. I just, yeah, I have the people's budget here, and do you all want them? I can, thank you.
Thank you. If you could share them with our city clerk.
Thank you.
Tantash is next. Blanca Proxima.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sandosh Bhugata, representing Cricket Association of Phoenix for entire Arizona. First of all, I would like to thank you for accepting, you know, proposing the changes that we have been fighting for almost few decades, actually. Thank you, everyone. Madam Mayor, your team, Tony, and City Manager Jeff, Amber, and Inger, Councilwoman Debra, Councilwoman Aubreyan, and many, many more behind my team. There are a lot of relentless city staff, council staff, working on getting the most diversified budget. Organizing cricket, it's a very small event, that's what everyone says, organizing cricket with 44 people is really tough, and without safety conditions, and especially with no dedicated grounds, it's very, really tough, basically, to have safe and sound game. I echo a lot of sentiments present here, but at the same time, everyone is important. And I would like to thank for giving me this opportunity, especially to allocating 250K, which is only a beginning. The average cricket field costs more than that. We'll discuss those details, you know, along with the city officials. But besides expressing the thanks, I would like to emphasize that we are here, my friend also is here, we are here to collab and partner with all the officials to get it done in the right way. Thank you.
Blanca Proxima, then Stephanie Espinoza.
Si, por favor. Blanca que? Yo soy blanca.
I'm blanca?
Sí.
Yes.
Blanca Barca?
I'm Blanca Barca. Yes, okay.
No, me están contando menos.
They're counting minutes against me.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon to all of you.
Mi nombre es Blanca, y soy del distrito 7.
And I am from District 7.
Y verdaderamente estoy de acuerdo cuando alguien dijo que debería de aplicarse el dinero a donde debe requerirse.
I'm in agreement when someone told me that I needed to, that monies should be applied to, toma paz, por favor.
No traemos ideas, nosotros traemos hechos y necesidades que una comunidad requiere.
We want action and works that should be done that a community is requiring.
Se les entregó a ustedes un presupuesto del pueblo donde la comunidad tuvo voz.
We turned over a proposition to you from El Presupuesto del Pueblo, which is the public's budget.
Y ahí verdaderamente la comunidad del pueblo manifestó esa voz.
The community of the public, rather, is the one who has voiced this opinion.
Una de las voces que ellos transmitieron es hacer que el transporte público sea gratis.
One of the things that they proposed is that public transportation should be free.
Se requiere, es necesario, lo necesitamos.
It is necessary. We need it.
Queremos hacer un cambio para cuidar el medio ambiente.
We would like to make changes to change the environment.
Phoenix es una de la ciudad que es una mina de oro para muchos inversionistas.
Phoenix is a gold mine, you might say, for people who are here for the sole purpose of investing.
Y tenemos comunidades muy vulnerables que necesitan transporte público.
We have very vulnerable communities that need transportation, that is, public transportation.
Ustedes lo pueden hacer, lo pueden lograr realizar, que el transporte público sea gratis.
You can do this. You can make this happen. You can make sure that we have public transportation, and that it should be free.
Y por qué no que seamos pioneros a nivel nacional de que empecemos a hacer algo por la comunidad más vulnerable.
Can't we be the champions, the ones that initiate this free program for individuals, for those of us who are vulnerable?
En lugar de emplear más dinero a la policía.
Instead of giving more funds to the police.
No más dinero a la policía, emplearlo verdaderamente a la comunidad y a esas necesidades.
Don't give the money to the police. Give it to where it belongs, in the community.
A veces, no soluciona las causas fundamentales, y continúa siendo muy agresiva y muy bruta la policía.
Instead of making things better, the police seems to make things worse on individuals, those of us who are vulnerable.
Todos, incluyendo a ustedes.
All of us, including all of you.
Merecemos vivir vidas saludables.
We deserve to live lives that are healthy.
Alegres, vidas largas, en vecindario, prosperos.
And have a prosperous future.
Gracias, y lean, por favor, el presupuesto del pueblo.
And please read that proposal that we, the people, proposed.
Stephanie is next, followed by Rebecca.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephanie Espinoza, I'm with Poder en Action and the Pueblos Budget. Today, we are here because we are saddened to hear that you have, you're planning on increasing the budget for the police department. Instead, today, we bring to you five demands from the Pueblos Budget you can fund immediately with the surplus funds in order for our community and our neighborhoods to be safer. You can expand free public Wi-Fi, increase the number of public restrooms in public spaces, and have them open 24/7, make public transit free for all, expand the weatherization program, and continue to repair broken playground equipment in our parks. I do want to say thank you for listening to our community when we brought up how our local Sueño Park has been struggling, and for adding funding to continue to renovate our parks, but it doesn't stop there. We still have such a long way to go, so I encourage you to keep listening to our community and keep investing in programs that we urgently need and want, and that are a part of the Pueblos Budget, as have, most of you have seen already. I do want to thank District 4 and 7 offices for joining us on Saturday, and thank you for the departments who were there to provide any information on resources that are accessible to our community. We want to continue to bring those resources into our folks and have them to be truly accessible. So, we encourage you to continue to invest in those city departments who actually provide solutions to the problems and issues we face in our community, and not just throw a Band-Aid solution on things, which is policing that doesn't solve anything. We really need to continue to add funding to them to be able to achieve healthy, long, and joyful lives for our folks. Thank you.
Rebecca Denis, followed by Miroz.
Thank you. I'm going to echo my many comrades who have already voiced their support to see the Pueblos Budget used as a guide in this year's budget process, and I'm in support of the demands that have been vocalized already by Stephanie. It's about $15 million in community infrastructure items, but I would actually like to use the rest of my time to address the op-ed that came out by Daryl Criprian in yesterday's AZ Central, because the things that were stated in that op-ed are often what is used to justify the $120 million raises and the increased funding we see to policing. So, I'll start with a mashup of quotes. While there was a recent effort to increase recruitment, "The job is getting more difficult as morale continues to be harmed by politicians and activists who claim officers are motivated by racism and indifferent to the struggles of the neighborhoods we patrol. The anti-police rhetoric is shameful, making gross generalizations of any group is unacceptable, yet many in our community think it's acceptable to make broad inflammatory comments about police officers. As members of this community, we hold ourselves to a high ethical standard. We ask that those in the media and within political orgs do the same as we try to change the community sentiment towards our police officers. The reality is that there are officers who are racist, whether it is overt or subversive in nature, and policing in roots is a racist institution. Even if an officer cares, often, their lack of understanding and ties to the communities they patrol will mean that they will be disconnected from those neighborhoods and other those constituents. Criticizing the police isn't about attacking the supposedly good-natured motivations of individual officers, because once they enter into a department who refuses to fire officers on the Brady List, refuses to comply with city-funded investigations, refuses to call out, expose, and fire the officers they know belong to white supremacist groups, refuses to atone for all the corruption and harm that consistently has been revealed, they will be seen and judged based on that environment, and will more than likely be shaped and changed by that toxic culture. How else should the community make comments about the department? Yes, the comments are broad, but so is the violence, lack of accountability, and lack of transparency. And we should judge every police department by their lowest common denominator, by the worst of the worst in that department, especially when they are allowed to keep in their positions, because if the city will allow that, then how can they, how can anyone be trusted? There's more, but Isabel Garcia will be following the rest of my speech.
Thank you. We'll go next to Miroz, and then Isabel.
Good afternoon. I am a resident of District 6, and I'm also here in solidarity with everyone else here about the Pueblos Budget. I really hope that you all take the time to read it and review what community and all the work that we've done to collect all these, all this feedback, and really, the dreams of community and what they wish their city budget would look like. And again, these are basic demands, and they're, like my fellow mates mentioned, they're basic, and they're simple, and they can be done now. We want community to be able to live happier, longer, and happy lives. Right now, you know, we're looking at the aftermath of a pandemic, and still, COVID numbers are going up. And unfortunately, that has created a change in our economy, a change where we're seeing people getting evicted, we're seeing our rent increase, and we're seeing lots of needs for mental health services, and also for individuals that are homeless. These are communities that are vulnerable, these are communities that continue to get hit and hit after, right after the other ones. Especially right now, with the summer coming up, we're going to see an increase in deaths, deaths, sorry, of individuals that are homeless. So, please, I encourage you to please read this budget, please take in consideration the vulnerable communities that are looking up to you, that voted you in the positions that you find yourselves right now.
Isabel is next, followed by Martha Avendanos.
Hi, my name is Isabel. I live in District 7 in South Phoenix, and I am going to continue the response to please op-ed yesterday. So, another thing that was mentioned in that op-ed is that the work we do is unlike most professions, we are still human, and the traumatic events we too often witness have an impact. Mitigating trauma in our communities is valid, but imagine the trauma of the people and the situations that officers are responding to. They are the ones living... to. They are the ones living it, that trauma and that trauma of needs not being met takes a toll to, and the PTSD people have from bad experiences with officers and what they see happen to others that looks like them is valid and real too. And there's a lot of research out there that shows that chronic stress, chronic PTSD from living in neighborhoods that are constantly policed has adverse effects on health. When officers respond to any situation, they have the upper hand. They have tasers, guns, pepper spray, rubber bullets, tracking technology, drones, helicopters, bulletproof vests, and supposedly de-escalation training. They are coming into any situation the most prepared, and yet we're supposed to believe that they are at a disadvantage in comparison to anyone in the public in danger? Higher wages have never helped me or anyone else I know heal or learn to deal with my trauma and PTSD. If we focused on the trauma that is created when our city budgets don't address the needs of its constituents and made an investment in making our communities healthier, officers wouldn't be plagued with the aftermath of dealing with issues that could be reduced and addressed differently through funding, the solutions, the things that actually address root causes of harm. Another thing that was mentioned is that officers respond to burglaries, car accidents, domestic violence, deadly crimes, and other calls. All of these things can be addressed through other ways, through other strategies. It does not need to be the cops.
Martha next, Estela próxima.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Martha.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha.
Yo vengo a hablarles ahora de la ampliación para el Wi-Fi público gratuito para...
I wanted to request that we have public Wi-Fi that's free for...
Para la comunidad de Maryvale.
For the Maryvale community.
Con lo de la pandemia nos dimos cuenta de lo importante que es el Wi-Fi.
During the pandemic, we found out that it is very important to have Wi-Fi.
En especialmente para los estudiantes.
Especially for students.
Que tenían que trabajar desde casa.
That were working or doing work from home.
Para ellos empezar lo de la pandemia utilizando el Wi-Fi fue muy difícil trabajarlo y más cuando somos personas.
It was particularly very difficult for the children to use Wi-Fi and work from home doing their schoolwork in the Maryvale area.
Que no teníamos un Wi-Fi disponible en nuestra casa.
We did not have this supposed Wi-Fi in our home.
El utilizarlo se hizo algo necesario para nosotros.
Utilizing it was something that we needed, that it was necessary.
Y aprender nuestros hijos a utilizarlo para hacer sus tareas y así salir adelante.
Not only having it, but also having our children, teaching them how to use it so that they could get their homework done.
Para nosotros los adultos como padres de familia...
For us adults, as parents of our children.
Tuvimos que adaptarnos a una forma de trabajo muy diferente.
We needed to adapt to a different form that is very, well, it's different for us.
El trabajar desde casa se hizo lo más importante para nosotros y continuar...
It was something that was very important for us.
Hasta ahora, después de dos años, seguimos aquí trabajando en casa con Wi-Fi.
And yet, to this day, two years later, after the pandemic, we're still working from home, still using the Wi-Fi.
Por eso yo les vengo a pedir ahora que se amplíe esa red gratuita para nosotros que en ocasiones no podemos pagarla o estar constantemente con nuestro servicio.
It is very difficult for us parents to provide Wi-Fi for our children so that they could get educated. We, on occasion, do not have the funds to pay for it.
Del Wi-Fi es todo lo que les tengo que decir, pero quiero agradecerle a Distrito 4 y 7 para nuestro evento del sábado que estuvieron presentes.
I wanted to just state that we would like to find out if there's any way we can have free Wi-Fi. That is all I wanted to say about that, but I did want to thank you, those members of you in District 4 and 7, for the event that happened this weekend.
Y al Distrito 4, gracias por aportar ese apoyo al Parque Sueño que fue posible en nuestro evento.
District 4, thank you very much for the Parque Sueño. It was something that...
Y que sigue invirtiendo en los parques porque no nomás quedó ahí, que le invierta ese parque, es un parque bastante bonito.
Please continue to do what you're doing and investing in our parks.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Estela Irma Pacheco próxima.
Buenas tardes, señores del Consilio y de más audiencia.
Good afternoon, council members.
Mi nombre es Estela.
My name is Estela.
Y hoy estoy aquí como muchas veces, ya he estado y seguiré estando.
I am here again today as I've been and will continue to be.
Hasta que escuchen nuestras voces...
Until you hear our voices.
Y ustedes entiendan que lo que pedimos es algo que merecemos porque pagamos...
And that you understand that what we're asking for is what we deserve because we pay...
Porque pagamos taxes y no es gratis lo que nos van a dar. Es de nuestro dinero...
We pay taxes and we're not receiving it...
Perdón, sí.
We pay taxes and we're not receiving what we do have for free. We are paying for it.
Es por eso que cambiamos el presupuesto de la ciudad al presupuesto del pueblo.
That's why we changed the term, the budget for the city should be termed now, the budget for the people.
Hay cinco demandas...
There are five.
Que ustedes pueden hacer reales ahora, que las pueden financiar ya.
There are five demands that we are making that you can go ahead and pay for today.
Las ideas surgieron a través de cuatro años de conversaciones con miembros...
The ideas came to be after four years of conversation with members...
Con miembros de la comunidad...
Of the community.
Sobre lo que necesitaban para estar saludables y sentirse más seguros.
Regarding what they needed in order to be healthy and...
Y sentirse más seguros.
And feel secure.
Y pasamos el año pasado volviendo a la comunidad para priorizar y votar sus ideas.
We were conversing with them last year in order to get this in place and...
Y votar sus ideas.
And vote on their ideas.
En lugar de millones de dólares para aumentos salariales...
Instead of spending millions of dollars on augmenting raises, rather...
Y bonificaciones de la policía a un departamento...
Donating monies to the police...
Que está siendo investigado...
To a department that is being investigated.
Por el Departamento de Justicia...
By the Department of Justice.
Y que ya recibió 20 millones en aumentos salariales al verano pasado.
And that last summer received 20 million dollars in funds.
Nuestras demandas es ampliar la red Wi-Fi gratuita.
Our demand is that...
Ampliar la red Wi-Fi pública gratuita.
We would like to have public Wi-Fi, and it should be for free.
Para aumentar la cobertura en los vecindarios negros, indigentes, y de personas de color.
This would be not only for indigenous individuals, but for the black community and those with low recourses.
Aumentar la cantidad de baños 24/7.
That you should have public restrooms 24/7.
Hacer que el transporte público sea gratuito para todos.
And that we should have public transportation, and it should be free for all.
Y yo creo que coincidimos ustedes con nosotros, pero nosotros queremos ver realidades. No queremos que nomás nos digan y no nos cumplan nada.
We want this to be carried out. It should be something between you and I or you and the people, something that becomes reality and not just something that you say you're going to do, but they're actually carrying out.
Porque ustedes están ahí, porque la comunidad quiere que ustedes estén ahí.
Because you're in your positions, because the community wants you to be in those positions.
No más dinero a la policía.
No more money for the police.
Irma Pacheco próxima, and then Senator Hernandez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Irma Pacheco.
Good afternoon, my name is Irma Pacheco.
Yo pertenezco a la clase trabajadora...
And I belong to the working class.
Y la que mueve este país, la que mueve este estado, la que mueve este país.
We are the ones that move...
Y mueve este estado.
And have a play in this community.
Y soy víctima de la crisis de vivienda.
I am a victim.
De qué? De la crisis de vivienda.
Regarding the crisis of home, the home...
Crisis.
Home crisis.
Entonces, yo les pido, por favor...
I would like to ask you, please...
Que la affordable housing venga a ser verdaderamente una realidad.
That affordable housing should become a reality.
Nosotros los trabajadores necesitamos un hogar seguro.
We, the workers, need something more secure.
Un hogar seguro, barato.
A home that is not only secure, but it is affordable.
Durante la crisis, muchos de los trabajadores nos tuvimos que ir a buscar estudios...
Many of us workers have to look for...
Lugares poco convenientes. Algunos de mis compañeros rentamos cuartos dentro de...
Toma pausa, por favor.
Así como...
Studios and other places that we could afford to pay.
Algunos de mis compañeros tenemos que rentar cuartos dentro de hogares con familias.
Some of our companions had to rent rooms in people's homes in order to be able to make it.
Desgraciadamente, el trabajo más pesado es el más mal pagado. Estamos hablando de 15...
Unfortunately, the jobs that are the hardest to do are the ones that are underpaid.
Estamos hablando de 15, 16 dólares la hora.
We're talking about amounts of 15 to 16 dollars an hour.
Entonces, yo estoy pidiendo que el transporte público sea gratuito para podernos ayudar a transportar a nuestros trabajos.
Public transportation should be free so that we could get to our jobs.
Lo exijo.
And I am demanding it.
Y también en la affordable housing que sea una realidad...
Also, affordable housing should become a reality.
Que no sea una promesa de campaña nada más.
Not just a campaign promise that you make.
Y desde que yo soy trabajadora desde los 23, 24 años, llevo cansada a mi casa...
Since I've been working for the 23, 24 years.
Hago ejercicios al aire libre, estoy involucrada en mi comunidad.
I get home, I'm tired, I do exercises outdoors, I'm dedicated to my community.
Yo no tengo tiempo de hacer crimen ni de pensar en vandalismo.
I don't have time for committing crimes or to think about vandalism. I am a respectful individual.
Y creo en la policía, pero yo no creo que la policía necesite tanto dinero...
I believe in the police, but I do not believe that the police need that much money...
Para mantener segura esta comunidad.
In order to maintain the security in the neighborhoods, in the community, rather.
Yo pienso que es mejor invertir el dinero...
I believe it's better to invest the funds, the monies...
Para las causas, para la vivienda.
In good causes for housing.
Yo tengo fe en que envie a mi comunidad feliz, contenta...
I have faith that I would like to see my community happy.
Teniendo un hogar seguro...
Have a secure place to live.
Más parques...
More parks.
Más comunidades donde tengamos más cosas para hacer al aire libre...
More communities, more areas where we could go and do things outdoors.
Y yo tengo fe en ustedes porque nosotros no nos equivocamos cuando los elegimos. Tengo mucha fe en ustedes.
I have faith in you all. I do not believe we were wrong when we picked you.
Yo lo sé, he visto trabajar todo a todo hombre a hombre en nuestras comunidades, y yo sé que ustedes me van a escuchar.
When we chose you, I think that you will help us. I believe you will.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Hernandez, followed by Vikram Seva Kumar.
Thank you. My name is Anna Hernandez, lifelong resident of the city of Phoenix, also representing Legislative District 24, which is Maryvale and South Glendale. The trial budget continues to show that the highest priority to this city continues to be investing in police. It is disingenuous for council members to state that areas like housing and heat mitigation are priorities when those words are not backed up by investment. In the midst of multiple crises, we are looking at a budget with the highest line item investment of nearly $1 billion to Phoenix Police. In contrast, housing is budgeted at $198 million, and we heard that we should wait to look at waiving fees on affordable housing projects until later in the year or next year and see if there is funding left for that. It is also noted in the trial budget that we will see 125 new affordable housing units added by 2024. $198 million and 125 affordable units is nowhere near enough if this council is serious about addressing the crisis that Phoenix residents are facing when it comes to housing and homelessness. Human Services line item is being reduced to $172 million, which is extremely concerning given that we are already seeing 100-degree temperatures upon us. The council still has time to shift the priorities in this budget and invest into people over police, and show that they are serious about delivering solutions on housing to the residents of Phoenix. Approving a budget with nearly $1 billion into police is egregious, and funding would be better spent on housing and all the other resources that the community has continued to show up to advocate for over the years. I urge this council to rethink their priorities and really back up their words with action.
Vikram is next, followed by Ben Lewis.
Respectable mayor and members of the council, respected city manager and city officials, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I'm so overwhelmed to hear that cricket was mentioned so many times in this meeting, and that too, the smile on each person's face. And, you know, it is so close to our hearts, and we have been around for 30 years, and we're so excited to finally be noticed. My name is Vikram, and I'm a volunteer coach and director at American National Youth Cricket Academy, which is based out of Phoenix. We are affiliated to Arizona Cricket Association, and you had the opportunity to hear Hassan Rafi speak earlier. We're also affiliated to USA Cricket Association, and we have about 30 kids in our academy, in the group of 6 to 18. And we have even four American adults who joined after watching cricket on TV, and they were so interested in the game, and they come and practice with these kids. And these are baseball players, and they kind of coach our cricket kids on how to, you know, feel the ball and everything. So we are mixing expertise here, and that's such a great cultural mix for us to have. And we are the only youth cricket academy functioning out of the city of Phoenix. We do practice every week on Mondays and Wednesdays at 6:00 PM at Buffalo Ridge Park. I personally invite every member of this council and every city official to come drop in and, you know, witness the enthusiasm of our kids. I wanted to thank the city for including this $250K grant this year in the budget. It's a great start for us. It's a very emotional thank you from the academy and its members, especially the kids. I can even see tears coming on some of the parents who wanted to see their kids play the sport that they love. It's not, and $250K is a great start. And, you know, as a request from our kids and the academy's patrons, we wanted to request the city to invest these funds in the grounds that are primarily used by Arizona Cricket Association, as they are the primary sponsor for youth cricket, and they have the connections with USA Cricket Board. Lastly, I just wanted to say that USA Cricket is also a co-host for World Cup Cricket in 2024, and youth cricket is the way to represent USA for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben is next, followed by Maria Sanchez.
Hello. In January of 2023, we counted 202 homeless folks for every 100,000 residents in the city of Phoenix. That's way up from the 98 when I moved here seven years ago. Today's budget process proposes we spend one grand shy of $1 billion on policing while we can't even muster the motivation to help our residents who need help the most. Instead of focusing on housing and care, we default to an over-militarized and violent police force sent only to harass them. And here's the rub. I know the cops don't like doing the job we asked them to do. They don't like picking up the same heat-exposed, overdosing, and mentally unwell neighbors to take them to the ER just to get another call a few dozen hours later to retrieve those exact same folks and deposit them back on the streets. It's a depressing cycle of rinse and repeat. We should be ashamed for demanding this repeated violence from our police while we continue to neglect the care and support our residents desperately need. And this budget is not even good for cops. Instances of police families and police officers in crisis in Phoenix have... and police officers in crisis in Phoenix has spiked 10% over the last year. This proposed budget isn't what health or safety looks like for anybody living in Phoenix, much less the police. We have officer retention problems because this city's elected officials have an addiction to violence and enforcement. And you can't play like you don't know what else to try. The expansion of the police budget proposed today could pay for every single thing other folks have asked of you. And then some. It could make public transit free. It could pay each unhoused resident a $33,000 annual health and housing stipend. It could keep our public pools open for more than the two short months, three days a week, five hours a day we opened public pools last year. So don't feign hopelessness when you are the only people who have the power to change the trajectory of this train wreck. The city is crumbling under your budget direction and it's long past time you tried literally anything else. Ay, yo mata.
Maria is next, followed by Sushil. Maria, can you hear us? Maria, we can't hear you. Okay, let's go ahead and try Sushil then.
Stop funding cops over community. I know telling you this again is futile, but hear me out. If cops were the answer to our people's problems such as heat exposure, overdoses, guns in schools, then name a few I've heard y'all say you care about. Wouldn't you have expected to see the desire changes for the better by now? I mean, you can't even fund a cricket field correctly. It seemed to think you had that in the bag. Y'all's disconnect here would be funny if it wasn't already so disappointing. And thank you, Baez, for asking, but this council has already increased Phoenix PD's budget from $670 million in 2018 to 721 in 2019 to 745 in 2020, when you got told loudly to defund the police. And yet still, y'all increased the budget to 780 million in 2021, 866 in 2022, seven, 979 million dollars. Again, funny, if not already disappointing. Have you read through the 584 pages of programs or just sitting there trusting Jeff and Amber showing you what you, what they think you'll enjoy? Let me give you a couple examples. On page 153, an increase from 230 to $617,000 to increase police Twitter and Facebook following by 10%, an additional $400,000 for follows. In 2022, they spent $880,000 on Facebook ads, Facebook ads. On page 160, an increase from 1.7 to 8.5 million to add four more cops to manage body worn cameras. That's an additional $1.5 million a cop. A $6 million increase for one project that won't even expedite the number of days it takes to process urgent critical incident requests. How does this help anyone? There's also a sneaky $4 million that's pulled from last year's surplus and line itemed as $0 in this budget for 51 more various cops. I see what you did there, Jeff. There's dozens of examples here if you actually look.
Thank you. We're gonna try Maria one more time and Maria, just if you could make sure your phone is unmuted. Maria, we can't hear you. Okay. And then Denise, do we have anyone else registered?
Mayor, there are no other registered speakers.
All right. Then with that, Council Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a question for Jeff. Jeff, do you think that it would be possible to incorporate a pilot program for public bathrooms before May 16?
Vice Mayor, Mayor members of the council, I don't honestly know what the all-in cost for that would be. I know you've quoted $250,000 for the restroom itself, but I think it's greater than just the cost of that. I'd have to talk to Inger and, and other folks. I know this has been presented to you at CCI on, on a few different occasions because I think it's not just the bathroom itself, it's the cleaning of the bathroom and then there's also some other security issues I think that have been addressed before that. The other thing is where does the money come from? So what is it that you would like me to reduce and cut? Because we have to have a balanced budget. So again, I think this could be handled the same way that we're talking about handling the other things where we would just simply find savings to address it if that's something that the council directed me to do.
Yeah, and to be specific, so the bathroom I'm talking about does not require security and we are piloting it at the 22nd Avenue Shelter, the Portnoy. It's approximately 130,000, so I was saying 250 could potentially pilot two. So if we could just, if you could speak with that team, because again, we all are already doing that for the shelter, I would just like to see it piloted in public places. We've seen lots of resident feedback on this at not only budget meetings, but even when I've had downtown stakeholder meetings, residents have been asking for this over and over again. I think it's a basic amenity. So if you, if you could just, if I could ask you to just look into that before we come into May 16, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.